I'm recording the meeting now, it says at six o'clock.
It's meeting at six o'clock. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Enfield Select Board's order. We are going to jump over approval of the minutes as they're still in draft form and go on to board reports. So, board reports, go around the table. Eric, do you have anything?
Oh, yes. The planning board had a nice meeting last week. Most of it, well, Rob gave us a nice general update of sort of how the planning office is going. You know, building permits are coming in as people prepare for the summer. I have a lot of education around the recently passed ADU zoning changes. Just educating homeowners and property owners of what that means when they come in to talk about projects. And then a good talk with Fire Chief Phil Neely around the just general concerns the fire department has as they look at further zoning changes and how to incorporate, you know, fire safety concerns in future zoning changes. So, that was pretty much this last week's meeting.
Grace, do you have an update from any of the committees you're on?
I do not.
Okay, done?
None.
Okay. I attended the conservation meeting. You guys got a forward. There's a little bit of a challenge, understanding that I was a member of the committee, I think, or Conservation Commission, sorry. I think hopefully that will be resolved. I had some trouble acquiring a packet after many requests. I got a few documents, so hopefully that will work its way through and we'll get a little more process and procedure down so we can get some more collaboration in place. Okay. And that's all I have. Alice, do you have any committee?
Um, Eva hasn't met. I got an email today from Meredith Smith of the Heritage Commission that they're going to be going back to their regular meeting times starting this month. Which, so it won't be this Thursday, it'll be next Thursday at 4:30. I emailed her and said there might be some conflict with the JPC, but I don't expect that to persist beyond June. With regard to JPC, the Johnson Properties Committee, we met last week and there will be two upcoming public comment meetings. April 27th at 5:30, that meeting will be primarily for the online option of Teams and May 11th at 5:30, there will be a meeting in person at the community building.
Great. Okay, and we'll move on to town managers' report. Ed?
Hey, thank you. Staff report really hasn't changed a lot. We're continuing to look for two police officers. Applications still slowly trickle in and we review each one. I did have a discussion with Police Chief Holland last week and I approved him changing his advertisement to put in the flexibility of a sign-up bonus for certified people. And we didn't come up with any parameters on that, but if we do get someone interested, we'll negotiate that at the time. But something we'll look at and if it seems to work, then we may be talking about that at the Budget Committee meeting to see about something a little more sustainable. But at this time, we're doing what we can to try to get some applications through the door. Other than that, we're still full on all other staff positions. The community power update, the Energy Committee held a virtual public forum on April 4th. Was that there? Actually, I think that was their normal public forum on April 4th and about 52 participants they had at the community building. So, it went really well. I received good reviews from that event. The recording from the first one, the first event from March 28th is still up on the town's website and the YouTube channel if anybody would like to watch that. So, we're just hearing some really good information coming out of that. A lot of good work going on. Most of the community members now should have received a community power letter. I did find out through CPC and H that Liberty Utilities on their first batch of addresses that they gave us didn't put apartment numbers or anything on some of them, so we did have some returned. CPC and H worked with Amanda Noonan from the Division of Energy and everybody agreed in that meeting that we're gonna move forward with the transition and we're just gonna get those letters out as soon as we can. We have received updated addresses, but since electric rates will be going down, she didn't see any problem with moving forward with the transition. So, we're gonna be doing that and we're hopeful that the transition should start before the end of this month. So, I don't have an exact date, but they're moving forward on that transition. Um, update on the Public Safety Building Whitney Hall project. Not a lot's happened over the past couple of weeks since we met. Our contractors are still working on final design, costing, mechanicals, all that information. So, we're hopeful that we'll have something pretty soon. We did schedule a preliminary meeting tomorrow with the Police Chief, Fire Chief and our contractors and New Hampshire DOT to talk about, you know, what we have for a building and what we're gonna be looking at on Route 4 there so they can get us the information that we need to start putting things together to get that permitting moving forward. RFPs are due tomorrow for Whitney Hall and we've scheduled interviews for next week on the two contractors we're looking at for that. So, we'll be continuing to move forward and we're hopeful again to have a contractor in place by next month sometime. And then we have received notice that the county is making 50, up to $50,000 grants available from their COVID money. I've been working with the police and fire chief and right now we're planning on putting in for money to do a fire department exhaust ventilation system and upgrade from what would be going into the building to help fire and EMS safety for their personnel so they're not breathing any extra diesel fumes that they don't need to. We were looking at that. We were doing a little shifting and that was gonna be on the CIP plan, but if the county's offering that money, we thought it might be a good use of that money moving forward. So, we'll continue flushing that out and we'll be coming to you guys either for permission to put in for that unless the date's too soon, then we'll be asking for your guys' permission for acceptance of that money. If you have any other ideas, please email me or get ahold of me. We will vet that. The brush dump will be opening for collection on May 3rd. Didn't wanna let the select board know that the brush dump will be operated as it did at the end of the last season. We thought that worked well with brush being dumped there and then we would pick it up and truck it to have it shredded so we don't lose another chipper.
Yeah.
It was, it actually became a pretty good system and so DPW was happy with that. We're gonna continue doing that this year. The Maple Street Water Main Project has started. The construction company was up there today, starting to put lines in the ground. L&amp;M Construction from Orford, New Hampshire is the construction project company that's doing the project. They will be replacing the water line beginning at US Route 4 and ending at the Marshwell, Canaan, the project. So, the interconnection with the main on Route 4 and directional boring is beginning today and we'll keep working through that. This project is estimated that the work will last four to five months. We'll be working on that. Um, we're also moving forward on the Oak Hill Bridge, Oak Hill Road Bridge. We finally received the necessary permits from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. The project is scheduled to begin in late May. The bridge deck and steel are constructed and ready for installation during the Oak Hill Road. During the project, Oak Hill Road will be closed at the bridge location for three or four weeks while the old culverts removed, concrete's poured and cured and the new deck and railings are installed. So, we'll get more information out as we get closer about that, but we're excited to get that project underway as well. And then just wanted to let everybody know that the Old Home Days Weekend has been moved to July 16th. This decision to move back to summer was made for multiple reasons. Some of the, some of the easy ones to list off was that it was fairly cold and dark in September and we lost people pretty quickly. The kids were back in school and we had a little bit of conflict with some sports programs. They also made the decision, not lightly, but they made it looking at dates where they could work in coordination with the Shaker Museum and to keep some space between Enfield Old Home Days and Canaan's Old Home Days. So, there was no conflict there. So, they're looking at moving that back to the weekend. I think it's the 14th through the 16th and so we'll be continuing to plan that. There's been a little discussion in the last week and I don't know where they landed on whether to move it to a one day or keep it a two day. So, we'll be keeping you up to date on that as it moves forward. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions.
Does anyone have any questions on the board?
No.
Okay. Questions from the public? Gary?
Yeah, just as a point of interest, I read on the, online the other, last week that occupational diesel exhaust lawsuits are skyrocketing. So, if we don't plan on having the correct exhaust in the new building, I think we need to start planning on being able to fight lawsuits in the region. It's only gonna get worse.
Go ahead.
When I saw that up, I was, I thought of the DPW, where are we with cleaning that up and fixing that exhaust system?
I don't know.
Because way back when we were in the committee, that place was filthy with exhaust and we were saying people really shouldn't even be in there then, it was so bad.
We'd have to go back and check. I think that was replaced just before it started with the new YAD.
And was the place cleaned so that the ceiling?
That I don't know. I haven't walked through it since, but the exhaust itself, you know, the whole ventilation system, I believe, was addressed and replaced, but we can certainly look at that.
Yeah, we'll get some follow-up for the next meeting. Good questions.
I just have one other question, if I could, about the power thing that you mean. I was reading through that today, the pamphlet. So, what is the difference if, it basically says to me that we're switching, if you're on Liberty, it just automatically switches. But you have the opportunity to stay on Liberty. What would be the difference, other than, if you stayed on Liberty, the cost would be more?
Yeah, there's some price difference.
But what, other than that, what is, what is, what's the difference?
You're still with Liberty.
Right.
Regardless.
Right, I wondered.
So, I think it's, just answer on a really, really basic level. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to see the presentation, that the Energy Committee, it's online on YouTube, so it's pretty comprehensive, but the basics are, right, your energy supply isn't like the energy goes straight to your house. It's more like a bicycle chain. They push out X number of units on your behalf, the folks you're buying from and that are contracted because energy is a resource, right, that's contracted. They push out X number of units on your behalf, but the folks that you're paying the bill through, right, Liberty is still gonna do the work on the lines and things like that. You've always had this option to go to other suppliers. I think North American is one that comes to mind. I don't remember all of them. It's that we have this community group coalition now and we're not the only town in it to do competitive buying as a cooperative. The only folks in town who wouldn't be going over would be New Hampshire Electric Co-op because they already are cooperative with, right, so you should see the same level of service, right, and all of that. It's simply a buying mechanism. So, it's really, it's a market structure. If people choose to go on to, go and stay with Liberty, they can opt into that. You could also pick another, so I know there's North America and there's ENH and there's some other ones and pick whatever you want. And we just caution people, you know, look at the prices, look at the contracts, look at the early termination fees and choose wisely. But this was an opportunity to get some savings and also the folks on the Energy Committee made sure that they had built in tiers so that if you wanted to buy into more green power, you would have that opportunity. The Select Board opted to start at the base level for everybody the cheapest price and have everyone default to the cheapest price. Is that fair, do you think?
Yeah.
And one might ask that if you are, if you have solar panels and are doing net metering, it is not a good idea to switch.
And you will not be automatically opted over, yeah.
And that has to do with Liberty not?
Well, not just Liberty.
All of the, nobody's ready to follow along in the electric companies, to be fair, right? I mean, it's not, I don't think they're gonna make it a high priority either. So, well, they're supposed to be supplying that data and doing that work on that meter and that has not happened yet. Yeah. All right. Are there any other questions on the town manager's report from folks here in the audience? Are there any questions on the town manager's report from the folks online? Okay, and then I'd like to move along.
Grace is here.
Yes, Grace is here. So, I'd like to move along to the business of this evening. We're gonna start off with a DuBois and King presentation. We have been working on an invasive species inventory and mitigation planning project and Ed will kick it off and then invite Grace to join us.
Right, thank you. Yes, as you remembered, we did a project that you guys started right before I got here. Jack actually kicked it off and wrote the RFP and I was lucky enough to work with him to choose the company that we were gonna use to do our invasive species inventory. So, they, they looked at all town-owned lands. We didn't look at private lands. Not only do we not have the funds to look at every single private piece of property in town, but, you know, we don't have the authority to go walking on people's land either. We thought it was a great place to start to look at our town-owned lands, do an invasive species inventory and it would give us a pretty good idea of what was here in Enfield and what others would know. So, Grace is the one that did all the work and spent all the hard time in the field looking at every piece of property we have. And she can explain a little bit more of what she did, what she found, how she put the report together. I did send you guys a digital copy of that. If there's any changes you'd like to see, we can discuss that and then once we're, once we're all fairly happy with that, we'll release that as the final report. But I did ask Grace to come today to talk about that and then we'll talk a little bit about some events we have coming up.
Thanks, Ed. Let me pull up my presentation here. All right, is that visible?
Yes, on cue.
Oh, good. All right, thanks, Ed, for the introduction and thanks, everybody, for having me. I'm excited to share some of the findings of our fieldwork last summer as we kicked off this project. So, for the next about 20 minutes, I'm gonna share those results with you and we will have a little bit of time for questions. I'll try not to go over, so you will have time to ask questions at the end, but if anything's unclear, feel free to jump in. So, it's been a real pleasure to get to know the town of Enfield better as we completed this fieldwork and we had a lot of days out in the field where I said, wow, this is, I knew that Enfield had a lot of water and wetland resources, but it really was just striking and I know that you all know this, but it's really a striking thing about Enfield that not every, every town can say that they have these really vast well and complexes and diversity of different water resources. And so, being out there in places like this, where I took this photo, this is at the George Pond Access Wetland. So, if you're just kind of at the intersection of Bog Road and 4A, if you can picture that, there's a big wetland complex and this was at the height of summer out there and there were all of these bumblebees buzzing around me, pollinating this native pickerel weed, this purple flower here. And, and so, being out at sites like that, I'd like to kick off this presentation with reminding you of what the purpose of this project was, what the goals were. But times like those really reminded me of, oh, kind of the foundational objective of this project is to protect the integrity of places like this, the intact communities, natural communities that Enfield supports. Because standing there looking out at this wetland, I had 4A, you know, the road behind me and it's kind of dotted with glossy buckthorn shrubs, this invasive shrub. And so, seeing this, this really high-quality intact system and invasive species just starting to encroach is kind of a, just an example of exactly what we're trying to do at the end of the day. Protect and preserve those systems that make Enfield what it is and then try to restore a little bit of ecological integrity in other parts of the town. So, with that said, what exactly were we trying to do? Well, like Ed said, we sent, we set out to inventory invasive species on town-owned lands because really we were developing a management plan and you can't really develop a management plan without knowing what you have on the ground. So, we also knew that it wasn't real, really realistic to go out and eradicate every introduced species in the town. There are always gonna be seed sources, things coming in. It's just hugely costly to try to do that eradication. So, we knew that we wanted to be a little more strategic about it and really help the town wisely allocate funds towards high-priority areas. We then wanted to say, well, these are the species that are in Enfield and here are the specific management strategies that are appropriate for those species. You know, that's gonna vary, the time of year that you're doing treatments is gonna vary, species to species and the type of control you're doing, whether it's mechanical pulling, chemical application and so on. Another big part of this project was to take this information to the public realm and really try to bring this conversation to private landowners and make this, make the control of invasive species kind of a more collaborative effort between private, private lands and public lands, knowing that all of those different, different pieces matter to the big picture. And again, these are, these photos were taken at Mascoma Lakeside Park. So, native pollinators, including the monarch, which is, you know, now a candidate for endangered species status by US Fish and Wildlife on some native joe pie weed. So, what exactly did we do? Well, we did survey all of the town-owned right-of-ways, so 66 miles of road, both sides of the road. This was all done on foot and you can see all of the orange, little orange lines are town-owned roads. The red polygons are town-owned parcels and we surveyed 33 parcels ranging from very small little cemeteries, these red dots are mostly cemeteries, to larger parcels like Bicknell Brook Conservation Land and Mud Pond, the McConnell Well Wetland and some kind of heavy hitters like the Department of Public Works and the transfer station where, of course, there's a lot of fill coming and going and then different plants being moved around there. So, even though we missed swaths of the town that just couldn't, were outside of the scope of the project, we think that it was a pretty good cross-section of the town and you kind of get a representative sampling of the diversity of introduced species and their habits and distribution when you're getting little cross-sections of every corner of the town. We mapped invasive species using handheld GPS with sub-meter accuracy. This was able, so we were able to get a pretty accurate mapping of different plant populations. For example, this is an example of what our mapping looks like. This, this green polygon is a big stand of glossy buckthorn, kind of a dense thicket. And so, by getting this accurate mapping of these populations, we, in the future, will be able to monitor these populations and know whether the exact bounds of the population are growing or shrinking. This is particularly helpful with plants like Japanese knotweed, as you know, they form these really dense stands and so, we will be able to monitor what happens with those populations in the future. In terms of our definition of invasives, we mapped all species that are considered by the state of New Hampshire to be prohibited invasives or watchlist species. Those are two separate defined lists by the state. So, what did we find? We found 36 different non-native plant species. A couple of these were aquatic plants, fragmites or common reed and loose strife, but this project was mostly focused on terrestrial plants. So, 17 of those plants were on the prohibited list, the rest were watchlist. We mapped thousands of plants, though it's difficult to estimate the exact number. We estimate 3,700. A lot of those are big clones. Colonial species include Japanese knotweed and coltsfoot and some, some different big stand-forming species, so it's difficult to get an estimate. So, this is sort of an underestimate, but our winning most abundant species was glossy buckthorn, from the prohibited list at least. And just a couple words about glossy buckthorn, if you're not familiar with it. This is an invasive shrub, European shrub, and it looks a little bit like an alder at first glance, but it has blackberries. And this is a species that forms thickets in wetlands. It does really well in wetlands and it has been shown by a number of studies to restructure native plant communities. So, it will come in and it will actually inhibit the growth of certain native plants, specifically alders. And by, by actually inhibiting the bacterial symbiote that lives with the alder. So, there's this kind of disruption of the natural plant communities. And as you can see in this lower photo, this is a big wetland complex along the Mascoma River above the lake that drains into the lake and it's really naturally kind of an open cattail emergent marsh. But when the glossy buckthorn comes in, you get this kind of completely different wetland structure, completely different habitat. And so, as you can imagine, the, the specific birds that rely on emergent marshes for nesting now have this different habitat that's not really usable to them. And furthermore, the berries of glossy buckthorn are not nutritious to our native birds. So, it creates, you know, somewhat of an ecological dead zone. So, this is, you know, I talk about this species because it really was the most widespread species that we mapped across the town, meaning that it was found in different types of habitats. We would find it along many different road sides and parcels. So, really abundant, we, I think we mapped over 50, about 50 populations of it across our study area. And then this upper photo is just what the seedlings look like. So, and I noticed that along the Mascoma River in a lot of areas, it would just be kind of a mat of glossy buckthorn seedlings. And again, those can become so dense that they're out competing the native vegetation in those areas. These are the other, the other four really common species for a European honeysuckle, another shrub, multiflora rose, probably familiar with, and then two pretty well-known species, purple loose strife and Japanese knotweed. We also had some very abundant watchlist species. Coltsfoot was by far the most abundant along many, many road sides. This is the species here that is flowering right now, yellow flowers along the roadside. Looks a little bit like a dandelion and then the leaves come up later. This is a species that's probably moved around by mowing and the movement of fill. It's generally less of a concern than some of our prohibited species, but it does escape into native systems like wetlands sometimes. So, just a little bit of a highlight on Coltsfoot and then some of our other watchlist species. Bishop's gout weed is this plant down here. If you haven't seen this species, it's in the carrot family. Another one that, this is, this is one that we're watching, I think, more than Coltsfoot as it really tends to escape into floodplain systems and kind of out-compete native species there. Okay, some other results that were not invasive plants. We found some really interesting and kind of intact, invaluable ecological features on the landscape across Enfield. And, and these findings really helped us to prioritize areas for focused control. So, for example, back at George Pond, I was talking about earlier, there is this beautiful example of a fen. This is what ecologists would call a medium fen or an intermediate fen with a lot of this wiry sedge. I think the technical name for it is wire sedge sweet gale fen, but these are, you know, this is a classification system, the natural community classification system that we can use to name these different assemblages of species on the landscape and, and sort of talk about their rarity or their importance. So, this is an uncommon type of wetland natural community. And so, really great example of it and it's also, it sits on the edge of, I think, the And so really great example of it. And it's also, it sits on the edge of, I think, the, the largest prime wetland in Enfield, uh, that has big sections of peatland, which, uh, as you probably know, are, are really important on the landscape for carbon sequestration. So areas like this, it's, it's easy for us to say, oh, wow, this is, this is, you know, a stage on which all of these native species are thriving. This is a kind of a high priority area for, for management. Let's make sure that the road that runs along here, you know, we're, we're making sure that those invasive species aren't encroaching into the fen and, um, you know, damaging the ecological integrity of this area. Oh, and here, and here's just a visual of that fen area. You can see this. This is the, the George Pond parcel and the glossy buckthorn just kind of starting to creep into the fen, but really at a point where it's manageable at this point. Um, and not a lot else, except for some patches of reed canary grass and invasive grass, uh, growing in this, in this wetland. There are also intact natural community types in, uh, more visible parts of the town like Mascoma Lakeside Park. We have these great small sedge meadows, um, easily overlooked, but all of this coarse, grassy looking stuff is actually native sedges and, um, supporting all these wildflowers. Like you can see the Joe pie weed and the blue vervain. Um, and this is where we were seeing those, those monarchs. So making sure that, um, you know, we're, we're helping to protect the integrity of these systems um, is, is part of this whole management plan. And why do such meadow, meadows matter? Well, you know, then you see all of these bird species that are depending on, on these communities. Like the marsh ren and a lot of species that are in decline. And so this also plays into our prioritization because these, these places are so visible to the public. And we know that we're going to have this great place where people are going to come to the lakeside park and they can learn about how invasive species control is, is protecting these areas and why that matters. We also found, uh, in the course of our fieldwork, a population of a state endangered willow that actually had never been found on Mascoma Lake and never been found in the county. So it's really kind of remarkable. It's a population of this willow called Sandbar Willow that's about the size of the, uh, dining room table in all. And this is, um, on a town owned parcel along the lake. And so, um, just another example of how, how this ecological fieldwork can inform focused work where we see the little bits of glossy buckthorn and Rosa rugosa at the edge of this cobble shore supporting this willow. And so we can, we can go in there and make sure that this species isn't being pushed out under our watch, you know, it being the only population of the species on the lake. Okay. So all of those considerations played into, um, putting together this table of high priority parcels in red, medium in yellow and, uh, lower priority pars- parcels in green. So we ended up recommending seven parcels for a kind of high priority for control. So not only was this based on our fieldwork, but we also used an existing model, which you can see here on the right. This was developed by New Hampshire Fish and Game and, um, it shows high priority areas for invasive control in dark red and then lower priority in light yellow or white. So you can see this is, this is downtown, downtown Enfield and this is Mascoma Lake and the, the bridge and lakeside park right here. So, um, it's, you know, pretty, pretty common sense. Areas that are higher up in the watershed that are wetlands, those are going to be higher priority areas for control. You can see all the kind of riparian corridors. And so we, um, wanted to make sure that our recommendations were matching up with, with the recommendations of that model. Okay. So, so what are we doing now? Well, uh, Duboy and King has developed kind of this, this management plan, but we won't be doing all of the control efforts. We, uh, are starting to work with Ed on working with a contractor to do the actual control in some of these higher priority areas. So I talked a lot about the parcels, but I also wanted to mention, uh, portions of the right of way that we will be focusing on for control. Um, here's George Pond again. And, and just as an example, you can imagine that it's, it's going to be really important to control all of these invasives, which are the red dots that are above these systems. I mean, any of these plants are going to be seeding directly into the wetland. Those seeds are going to go down and, and establish here and then eventually this drains into the lake. So prioritizing, prioritizing those, those road sides that are sort of sources, you know, for these outbreaks is, is something that, that we're considering. And here's just an example of, of one of the road sides with a big clump of purple loose strife, which tends to be spread by mowing. We're also working on some outreach efforts. Uh, planning is underway for a workshop on May sixth at Hughes Park. Uh, part of that workshop is going to be, uh, an invasive's ID walk. You know, I think it's going to be, it's helpful for people to, to get out and actually get their hands on these plants. For example, we'll look at things like a native silky dogwood here on the left, side by side with glossy buckthorn. How do you tell the difference between native, these, these native lookalikes and these invasive species? And then how do you control them? Um, so, so we really want to support landowners and you know, make them feel like they have the tools to go back to their land and they have the inspiration to, you know, know why that's important. And we've really enjoyed collaborating with Mascoma Lakeside Park and the volunteers there, uh, collaborating on a planting plan and, um, working on probably hosting an event there as well. And then also, uh, planning for a, a training with the Department of Public Works on plant identification and best practices for, for mowing and so on. So, uh, just kind of a couple concluding remarks. Really a big focus of, of this work was, was, um, strategy. You know, how, how do we prioritize? We have this big, big project area and it can be kind of overwhelming. We have a lot of plants to work with here. But let's take off bite sized pieces and work in areas where we're really going to see tangible results. And we're really going to be able to say, we are protecting these important areas of biodiversity in Enfield and kind of working towards our, our end goal here. Um, and that includes focusing on areas where plants haven't, uh, invasive plants haven't totally taken over, like those. Like George Pond where the glossy buckthorn is just sort of beginning. And that also includes species that we found that hadn't really gotten a foothold in the town overall, like Oriental bittersweet. And we barely found any, I think we just found a few populations of that species, things maybe like Norway maple that really aren't hugely prevalent in the town. I'm trying to kind of nip those species in the bud. So that's another strategy. And, um, we'll just continue to, you know, try to have a holistic view in, in invasive species management. So looking beyond our artificial boundaries that we've created, because we know that plants don't, don't abide by those boundaries. And that's kind of part of our efforts to work with private landowners. And then ultimately, you know, this is, we hope that this project will, will serve as a model for other towns. Because, um, ultimately, you know, we want to be tar- targeting, can controlling seed sources across town lines because we know that, that plants travel across town lines. So hopefully this will kind of serve as a foundation for further work across the state. Oh, and, and I'll just mention before I go to the next slide that for those of you who are fans of carden, are fans of cardinal flower, which is a really charismatic, tall, red flower. This was a, a white form of cardinal flower that I found along Mascoma River, which is, I've never seen. It was really cool. So you can go out, out hunting for the white form of cardinal flower. All right. I'll end it there and, uh, take any questions if we have time.
Thank you. I'm going to start with, uh, questions from the blackboard around the table. Eric. Tracy?
No questions, just a comment that I thought it was an excellent report.
Thanks so much.
No questions. Well, yeah, one, one small question. I know that in the beginnings of our discussion, we spent a lot of time promoting the, the presence of Japanese knotweed and you really didn't mention it much. Could you just give us a quick rundown on how serious an issue is that in Enfield?
Yes, I know it's, it's quite a visible one and one that I heard a lot about as I walked around and talked to landowners. It's definitely, I, I mean, you know this, but it's, it's pretty common. Um, I have to say it's, excuse me, um, comparable to a, a lot of towns in, in Vermont and New Hampshire where there seem to be pretty intact river shores. And then other areas that are just completely inundated. So that's going to be one, I guess, just maybe the only useful thing I can say about it is that's one that we're going to really rely on kind of a, a professional contractor to, to work with. Some of those big stands, but I think the first step is we did identify some places where it's just, it, it's just little patches. And so I think it will be one kind of satisfying thing that we can do, do now is to eradicate those small patches. And especially focus on upper watershed areas, because as you know, it, a flood comes through and any little bit of stems are going to form new plants downstream. So I think starting at the upper reaches of the watershed where it's being sourced and then working our way down. But it's a tricky one, those big stands.
Thank you.
Um, I don't have any questions, but thank you. It was really informative and compelling presentation. Thank you.
I think my question is a general question, not necessarily just of grace, but, um, an open question about, you know, going back to what John said about the knotweed and what we can do to help educate folks on the best way to remove it and eradicate it, because it's going to have to be a team effort and what we can do to really publicize this, invite folks. And I just wanted to know, I think it would be great to get this link over to conservation for the meeting today and really engage them in doing this work because there's huge value in the prime wetlands, which they have a large interest in. So whatever partnerships we can make to take all of this great information and great work and really get it out to the public. You know, making ask, I don't know the best way, but.
I think that and we did work together on the, if you read through the report that we sent you, there's a large portion of that is kind of the identification and how to, how to know what this plan is. So we, we really wanted to put a large effort in the education. We will be having a, a couple of events at least this year, and it may be something that we talk about to, to continue through the next few years to, to host this. And it's something we've already talked about, not making like an exclusive Enfield event that we, we want to invite everybody to come start to learn about this.
Yeah. I mean, I think even so much as do we send like a more direct, instead of just posting it and hoping you, a more direct invitation, invitation to say the state of New Hampshire, the folks at District Two and say like, we'd love for you to join us in this effort so that it's a very collaborative and inviting way of doing it instead of, and you may have already done that. I just, I really want to see this. Go through, we have a lot of work to do. And I, I'd like to acknowledge, I think Mascoma Lake Association was the one who came to us upfront, so engaging the lake associations.
Well, and that's one thing we've talked about is working with them to do maybe one of our next events or an event coming up.
I think it was a, a great start on a very big project. Um, do we have questions here in the audience? Hi, Patty Freed.
Question. Um, yeah, this is so exciting. I think, um, especially to see all of the, um, treasures we have as far as native plants. But one of the things that I, I wondered about was the poison ivy. Particularly at Lakeside Park. I don't know, um, about the other places in town, but I didn't see it addressed at all. I wondered about that.
Yeah. Hi Patty. Poison ivy is a native species and, you know, I have to, I have to say, it does have a lot of value for, um, native wildlife, birds will eat the berries and so on. That said, in a place where you have kids playing, people walking, it's totally reasonable to want to do a little bit of control. And, and people do. Um, so I would recommend trying to find, maybe a little bit more, um, water friendly chemical treatment or not chemical treatment, but some sort of spray treatment. I think you can do, um, you can pour boiling water on it. You can do a vinegar spray or something. I, I'm, I'm not quite up to date on the, the best poison ivy control, but there are, um, ways to kind of knock it back. Signage, I, I see people do signage too, but yep, totally understand how it can be.
A very fair question. Do we have other questions here in the public in front of us? Okay. I want to look, um, and see, are there any questions online? We're giving you an opportunity to raise your hands and make sure we don't miss anyone online. Go once, twice. Okay. I think, did you have anything more or?
No, I don't think so. We'll be putting out some information this week on the, on the, uh, event we're going to have on May sixth. We're going to post it at the community center. We're going to do about an hour or so worth of classroom work. And then like she said, we'll, we'll get outside and get our hands dirty and look at some different plants and look at some ways to, to work with those plants and the, maybe some mechanical removal or different ways that we can address those.
Will we be printing up any of the report?
I don't know that we'll print too much. We can print them on demand, but we will definitely be posting that online once we have it completely finalized and making sure that we get that out to people.
I wonder if, um, when you do the posters, if you do a QR code that links over just to encourage people to read it without maybe printing, you know, using as much paper. It's an idea.
It's a good idea.
Does anybody have any other questions for Gray? Okay. Thank you so much for the comprehensive report. Really appreciate it. And I'll look forward to working with you guys soon.
All right. Looking forward to it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right. So the next business of the evening is the CCTV RFP award. So, and I will let.
Yeah, this came to me today and it's, um, something that I know Jim's been wanting. We've been holding it off a little bit because he wants to have the, the sewer line scoped during spring runoff. And we, we talked to the company. It was, when I found out about it today, I was trying to decide if we added it today or put it on the May sixth agenda. But they, they told us that they may have time to start next week. So we thought we would add this to the agenda and bring it to you to get this, this award made. We had two, um, companies respond to the RFP. And as you can see in your packet, the, um, one company was seventeen thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy four cents. And the other company was thirty seven thousand five hundred dollars. So we recommend awarding this to DCP Engineering for seventeen thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy four cents.
And that's the source of the funds.
These are from the one point nine million dollar sewer fund. So it'll be coming from the bond that was passed.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the public? Online questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move the town of Enfield award contract of Bose circuit television inspection of Enfield sewer mains to DCP Engineering and authorize the town manager to sign the notice of award and associated documents as required by the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, state revolving fund and the federal ARPA funding.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed?
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you. We are on to special election discussion and I believe we also have our moderator. Yes, Lindsay Smith is joining us online. Supposed to call attention and include her. Um, I'll let Ed kick it off.
So as you know, um, John Adjutant has resigned from the House of Representatives for the health issues that he's experiencing. I've been working with Wendy Huntley, who's been working with the Secretary of State and the Governor's Office and many others to figure out how we're, how we're supposed to move forward with this. Looking at RSA six sixty-one eight, and I did put a copy of that in here in his packet. The town can decide whether we want to fill this position or not, since it's a single town representative. And, and then I did highlight the difference. If it was multi-town, it says shall. If it's single town, it's may. I would recommend that we, that we look at holding a special election moving forward since we're still in the first session of a biennium and it would be nice to have a representative for next year. We're not going to be able to put somebody in place till the end of the summer, but it would be nice to, or maybe even later, but it'd be nice to have someone ready for the, the second part of the biennium. We do estimate a cost, an unbudgeted cost of a special election to be about fifty-six hundred dollars. But we do believe that as we manage the budget through the year, we'll be able to find that with the funds that have already been allocated. So we're not asking for, for anything extra at that time. And then as we, as we learn the details of the process and we looked at the town of Bedford, they've had to do this once before and we've got the documents from them. We thought it would be a good idea to, to move forward, um, requesting specific dates as we move through. The RSA's do line this out very strictly on how it should be done. So, um, in working with Wendy and working with Lindsay, looking at dates, looking at, you know, we're going to be going right through the summer of when people can do this, when they're going to be around, not following on the July Fourth holiday or the Labor Day holiday. We would recommend, um, asking that at the June fourteenth meeting of the Executive Council and Governor that they set the dates. And then we looked at setting the dates as prescribed by the law. So the filing period would begin June nineteenth. The filing period would close the twenty-third. The primary election, if there was more than one candidate running, would be on the fifteenth with the final election being on October tenth. One caveat that if we don't have to have a primary election, the special election date moves to the primary date. I also added in there, I think I gave you a spreadsheet of all the different dates that were color coded. So those were the dates that we recommended working together that we thought would work best for everybody, but there are some other dates in there if you guys would like to, to do it in a different.
Any thoughts on the process or the dates from the board?
My question is probably for Lindsay. Um, Lindsay, is this a full-fledged election where we need to set up booths and everything?
Yes. Did you hear me?
Off the top of your.
Yep.
Off the top of your head, how many booths are we going to have to set up? There's quite a chore.
Um, so this is a state election, so it's one booth per, um, ba- basically the exact same that we did this last election. So Joshua was on the ballot this last election. So it looked just like that.
And am I correct that based on voting regulations in New Hampshire, we cannot use anything but the booths we have? We can't buy cardboard booths. Is that correct?
Um, we have to have, we have to have some cardboard booths, um, and, but we do need to use, um, booths with privacy screens that, you know, to, or to a point. I do have new ones, like I've, I've, I've found, um, other, like, we don't have to use those metal ones, but it's a very expensive to replace them. Um, other towns are starting to do it, things that are much easier to set up. There's like a quad system that's plastic, they're lightweight, but they're about a thousand dollars each for a four booth system.
I haven't been looking at the cardboard ones, which are inexpensive, but they don't have privacy curtains.
No, and, and they require tables and, and, and different things. So we need to have, um, stuff for, for, um, that are accessible, but also, um, yeah, different. So the, the cardboard ones, I mean, we have lots of those, but and I can set up the booths. I, you know, it's nice to have help, but it's also, I've, I've done it by myself multiple times too, so.
And, and I want to acknowledge this is a, a large undertaking, uh, but we have the state requirements and so we will do it the way we are required to do it. And I think this discussion on potentially replacing booths could go forward into the budget process. And, yeah, and, and because I think it's a valid question. So, and, and maybe consider, you know, how, obviously there's always lots of things to consider for budgeting, but, um, that.
But one thing I was going to suggest, this being a potential of a June or July election cycle. And it is a selectman's responsibility to ultimately see that an election goes through. I think we ought to allocate a couple of town employees to assist with that process this time.
I think we have a legal obligation from the state to be present. So I guess one of the things I would ask you to do is to take a quick look at your personal calendar.
We've, we've been having a hard time getting enough volunteers to set them up and break it down. And I've done an hour and a half, a dozen times.
Yeah.
So we don't need all five. Um, we need a quorum. So that's also a thing. Um, at least we need a quorum present at all times. So it's not necessary that everybody has to be there all day. Um, now that we have five people and, and/or if someone's out of town. Um, so as, as Ed said, um, I've looked through the dates and have indicated there are some that I'm not in town for. Um, again, we could do a, you know, uh, we can always do a, um, moderator pro tem or something like that. If there's other dates that work better for you all. But there's a, there's a list of, of the ones on, on his spreadsheet. I, I can't seem to find it really quickly on my phone. So, um, that work on our side. So we just need to see what works on your all side for at least three people or, uh, half days for a combination kind of stuff.
So I think the days we are looking at are the primary election proposed date of August fifteenth and the special election October tenth.
One question on those, the, the, one of the sheets since October third and the letter says October tenth.
Oh.
Sorry, just wanted to point that out.
October tenth.
That is the.
On the bottom.
Yeah, with this one here.
Right.
Yeah, you're right.
So there's two, it's just their week apart, but we'll make sure.
Now, I definitely would like to see Lindsay there, so I'd like to accommodate her schedule if at all possible.
Well, in the spreadsheet up top says ten, ten. It says, um, in the shaded area.
Yeah, it looks like the tenth is the right one. I'm just pointing out that there is another spot where it says third. We want to make sure we get the right number of days.
Yeah, earliest and latest window.
Have we heard from either one of the two, uh, political parties as to, uh, interest from both parties or potentially one election needed only?
I think that remains to be seen. It's up to them.
It's almost not really germane for setting dates. Because we set the dates the same regardless of who buys.
And if they find someone, they find someone, it's not, it's kind of outside of the review.
I think it's the third.
It's the third. Okay, that's the earliest.
But I will double check that. Yeah, because it's either the fifteenth and the third or the twenty-second and the tenth.
Okay.
I'll double check that. We don't have to sign the letter tonight if you guys are going that way because we need to get it to the Executive Council before their mo- meeting on June fourteenth.
I think the dates work for Lindsay. I don't know. I, I can accommodate my schedule.
Yep. I can as well.
I, I agree.
Okay. So we have three people at least and probably more. So do you need a motion? Yes, motion. So I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that the Select Board requests the Governor and Executive Council to set the date for special elections for state representatives for Grafton County District sixteen to fill the vacancy that occurred with the resignation of Representative Adjutant with a letter to be presented at the June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Executive Council requesting primary election dates. Do I include the dates in the motion at this point or?
I would, and if we need to come back.
Of August fifteenth, twenty twenty-third and a special election date of August third, twenty twenty-three.
We have a second?
I have a second.
Okay.
Yeah, October, October.
Okay, thank you. I'm reading along and I was like, yes, October. Is there any further discussion, questions or comments from the public? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you for doing that work for us. Thank you, Lindsay, and we'll be in line to help. Hi, moving on, we have Methodist Hill Property Use Committee Discussion. So in your packet, you have a proposal and Ed will get over with you.
Will and I already have some changes.
Perfect.
So I put this property use committee kind of charge together for you guys to review and discuss. Um, this is just my recommendations. I'll mostly, I'm just going to skip down to the membership charge and the duties because I think that's really what we're, what we're looking at here. Uh, the other part I, I copied really closely from the Johnson Property Use that it would be a, a short-term committee for this purpose. I would recommend that the committee have seven members. Again, that's about what we have on Johnson Property Use. We don't want it too small, but also if it gets too big and unwieldy, it's, it's hard to manage. I made a recommendation in there that we would have members from the Johnson Property Use Committee, one member from the, one from the Johnson Property Use Committee, one member from the Master Planning Task Force, one member from the Conservation Commission and four, and then I added the word resident members at large. And then I think we also should add the sentence that we did to the Johnson Property Use Committee that abutters or people who live on Methodist Hill would not be a part of the committee, but they definitely need to be part of the discussion. And then the duties you can look at below, again, were very similar to the Johnson Property Use Committee, asking them to meet with the Conservation Commission, Recreation Commission, Master Plan Task Force, the zoning administrator, abutters and the public to have discussions on this land. If you guys can think of anybody else, you can do it. And I did. I know there was a little discussion at the last meeting, but as I thought about it more, I would recommend that we not put members of the planning board or zoning board on there because there's a pretty good chance of this depending on what comes will need to go before that.
Right.
Use, having someone from the Master Planning Task Force might end up being a member of the planning board, but one member is a lot easier to, to work around multiple members.
Well, we could ask them not to select the planning board person.
Yeah, but if you had one member, you have alternates and you can move around pretty easily.
Yeah, they can do deserve.
True, yes.
A couple of grammatical comments. Membership in charge, the committee shall have seven members which are appointed by the Select Board or a total of nine members actually. So perhaps it ought to say a total of nine members, seven of which are were appointed by the Select Board. But including the town manager and recreation director will serve as ex officio members. So it's actually going to have nine members unless your plan is that you and the rec director might not have a vote. Isn't what I think we want.
I guess you guys can discuss that.
No, I don't mean to make that a point of discussion. I'm thinking that you should have a vote. I'm just saying, I think it should say nine members right, right away. That's all my thought is. The second one on the second paragraph where it says final designs, I think that should say recommendations.
I, I had that one.
And at the top of the paragraph where it says, uh, establish a recommendation, I think should be inserted for the Select Board. I know it's repeated at the bottom of the letter, but I'd like the preamble to indicate that it is a committee formed to come with a recommendation for the Select Board.
I think those are all.
What was your second one that you said you had as well?
The, um, where it's, um, says final designs, change that to recommendations. Because the recommendation might not be a design at the end of the day. Would you think, I mean, is that, just to make it so we're not limiting or implying that we expect a project?
Yeah, it does. Exactly. Design means something, a building.
Yeah. Are there any other questions, comments, changes folks would like to see?
Just one question for confirmation, but, um, thematic, the schedule is good, but December will give us time to, if a recommendation involved the ballot measure, we'd be able to put it on the ballot for next time meeting, correct?
Yes.
But it wouldn't necessarily have to be on the ballot.
Well, we, we can.
Yeah, that way we're not limiting ourselves one way or another.
An outcome today.
No, certainly not.
My point is if the outcome were a recommendation for a ballot measure, we'd want to make sure that it met all the timeline to be on next year's meeting. Right, which means it can't be in February.
Exactly, exactly. Yes.
This just says they'll be disbanded by then.
Yeah.
No, unless we decide otherwise.
I think the schedule is adequate. I think it's good. We just want to keep in mind that should there be a recommendation that involve the ballot measure, and again, we don't want to sort of pre-determine any outcomes. Then there's a schedule that that involves as well.
Are you pretty confident that the Johnston Beach group will be able to conclude their work? So that there's not an overlap? I know you had mentioned that that was an issue with you.
I think it'll be close. And if it starts late June or July instead, then that's when it starts, but we can look and see and look at timing.
Are you going to do the form like you did last time? Uh, because we have pretty good response.
Yeah, I think I would do.
And obviously people can do paper. They need to, but. Um, and we'll schedule a non-public.
Yeah, we'll do it exactly the same as we did in the last one.
So, yeah, for folks who weren't in, we took a look at like the big spreadsheet in the sky and tried to really balance out the committee. It was a challenging exercise because we had so many great volunteers, um, but it was a very good exercise. Look forward to that. Um, I guess I would, do you want a motion to constitute this as discussed or do you feel like it's necessary or we can agree? I mean, I'm fine with disagreeing as long as you don't really. Let's do it. Yes, absolutely.
I'm just thinking of total fairness. You eliminated in a butter as being on the committee.
Yep.
Automatically.
Yes.
Why can't in a butter? Because all of your potential candidates are going to come before a board and have them interviewed, correct? Why can't in a butter, just like somebody that I, because I would expect your butter is anti-this and going in as a, as the, uh, whatever. You're going to have somebody going on the committee that's absolutely pro. So why is it, why can you automatically say you, because you're a budding, have no say?
So it's not, it's not a pro and con, right? Like this committee is constituted to look at options. So there's not, we're going to do something versus we're not going to do something.
I understand.
Okay.
In theory, that's the case, but you're going to have people that are already deciding what they want. And I say eliminating a citizen who has concerns right there, he should at least, or they should at least be able to come before the board to present themselves and you can say, and you can make your choice of all of the candidates.
So the, the logic used when we did the Johnson Drive was that from a town perspective, this is a land use question. And when land use questions come before boards, the butters who are on the boards have to accuse themselves of policy. There was sort of, we do have discretion here. Who is taking that, um, recusal and extending that to these committees? And then including in the charge for the committee that they have to talk to these butters and have.
Is it the committee going to decide whether the town should retain, make a suggestion to the, the town?
Is going to make a recommendation.
Recommendation that that property be retained for that purpose or put it up or safe? Or, or whatever.
Myriads.
So I'm.
They're going to get that opportunity. And I think what's important is that we are tasking the group with listening to all the butters. And the problem is, right, how do you pick one a butter over another and make their voice have more weight by putting them on the committee? So instead of trying to pick who is the most appropriate butter, um, which would be very difficult and probably unfair, you are saying part of your job is to specifically listen to a butters. And so on the Johnston, um, beach property, they had an entire session devoted to that. Alice can, I'm going to pick on you for a second, but I think you've worked with the butters along the entire way and listened to them, but you also had a specific session just devoted to them. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think the butters who feel very strongly have actually consistently shown up as member of the public at multiple meetings, and their voices have been heard over and over. And I think something that has pleasantly surprised me about this process is the total neutrality of the members of the committee. I've been really impressed by that. So kudos to the select board.
Well, kudos to that. I, I had the opportunity to attend one of the meetings as a conservation member. It was an excellent meeting.
Well, I wanna say that because I've, I've bragged multiple times now, but I think the, the select board did a wonderful job when we were deciding that, to make sure that if someone had voiced an opinion and they knew someone was really pro or really against something, that they did not appoint those people to the board, and they did appoint a very neutral board with an open mind to listen to everybody. I could see that happening again.
Do we have more questions or comments from the public? Go ahead, Harrison.
Thanks. I, I now understand the logic of the butters being active participants, although not on the committee. But if I understood a previous comment, you were talking about abutters and general all-purpose Methodist Hill residents would not be allowed?
And that was a discussion as part, whether we wanna do as part of the charge.
Well, I thought that was just sort of a slight overstatement. I would, I would think it would be a butter similar to whatever the rules are for land use boards, you would apply a similar rule. And I don't remember them off the top of my head, you know, across the street in such.
It's like X number of.
You know, but there, but it's defined.
We can do that. I, like I said, I copied the Johnson Property Use one, and we definitely delineated that, that if someone lived down Johnson Road that was outside of that too.
And this is a pretty long road, so maybe.
Yeah, this, to me, this road is too, too long to make a general statement about all of the people who live on the road.
And I think we'll have an opportunity if somebody comes across an application process who has particularly strong feelings, we're gonna have an opportunity to consider their application one way or another.
Thank you.
Does anyone online have a question or comments? Guys are awfully quiet tonight.
What is that property address?
It doesn't have a street number.
It's a map.
Twenty-nine.
There you go.
Map two, lot twenty-nine.
Thank you.
So unless there's any objection, Ed will constitute the committee as we've discussed. Okay, thank you all for your comments and thoughts. We are moving on to the Arbor Day proclamation, and John has kindly agreed to read it for us.
I actually have a copy, which might differ slightly in that it was personalized for Enfield.
Hopefully it has the date of it.
It does.
He does not.
Get that out.
I fixed all of it.
Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture, the special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-saving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, we, Catherine Stewart, Eric Russell, John Klug, Alice Kennedy, and Tracy Young, Select Board of the Town of Enfield, New Hampshire, do hereby proclaim April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, as Arbor Day in the town of Enfield, New Hampshire. And we urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Well done.
That's the reason why I asked John to read it. He did very good at this. So Arbor Day is April twenty-eighth. Thank you very much. And then if anyone has questions on it, you know, go ahead.
Um, would it be possible to have that posted on the Enfield Town page? Does the day or two, please?
Yes.
It's lovely.
Yeah.
And this has a new flag downtown. Is there a flag?
Tree City?
Yeah.
Yes, we became a tree city again.
Yeah.
I don't know the exact years. I wanna say twelve years, but that's part of the reason we do.
You like our trees. All right, and next on the agenda is investment policy review.
So last month, you guys received the investment policy with a few recommended changes. This did go through the trustee of trust funds who reviewed it. They were okay with it. I explained to them the changes we were gonna do and why, and they were okay with that as well. So it comes back before you with no changes from last month.
Okay, do you wanna just give everybody a quick reminder of the couple changes you did make and?
Pretty much the couple changes we made was we changed the word selectmen to select board, and then we made the change from needing to review this thirty days after town meeting to ninety days after town meeting. But just give a little bit more time to go run through some committee meetings if they needed to do that.
As a matter of consistency, I just wanna, is select word two words normally? Are we?
We try to do two words.
Okay.
But it is written throughout everywhere differently.
That's why I was asking, because I'll try to align what I write to that. So if we're going with two words, I'm fine with it. I just was a general curiosity. Did anyone have questions on this policy or how it works?
A question, who are the present trustees? We voted to accept Scott Garami at the last meeting.
Scott, Marge Chase, and Cindy Halls.
So Terry has stepped aside. And the present treasurer for the town is Sasha Holland, am I correct?
Sasha.
I noted that a year ago, when this policy was adopted, at the same time, the fraud policy was re-adopted, and it's in the fraud policy that requires a readoption.
We have a number of policies that we have to continue to.
Yeah, we're gonna be doing.
No, I understand that, but it was just coincidental that the fraud policy was adopted at the same time as this, a year ago, and just thought they saw it go together.
There was, there was no particular reason for those to be.
We slide in policy review kind of, it's.
We'll be trying to do.
Yeah, we're gonna be doing more of it, but it doesn't have necessarily a structured cadence that goes into meetings, often either by necessity or when we don't have as much content for the meeting. Is that, I think that's a fair.
Yeah, and that's not an investment policy review every year that.
Yeah.
We get those out, and we'll be getting even some other ones.
And the question, have we been, or you've been receiving the reports that are required by this policy from the treasurer, et cetera? I know that we have a period of time where we didn't have a treasurer, so.
Well, the, the town does. I don't necessarily get them. I'm sure I can get them.
And I just note that one of the things in here is a receipt of policies and on a certain calendar basis.
You're talking about the quarterly investment reports?
Correct.
You do get those.
Yeah.
Of trustees of trust funds, yes.
And another point, which is education for me, if you'll allow me, under authority and process, it notes a couple of commissions that are eligible to withdraw funds from trust funds on their own.
Yeah.
And my question is to, what, what's the rationale for that?
Well, I know the Conservation Commission is state law.
The Heritage Commission currently doesn't have a fund, but if they were to have one, then I, they are also covered by RSAs.
And the Recreation Commission?
There is the possibility the RSAs do address meeting, conservation, recreation funds, but they also don't have one.
So I'd like to, on the conservation one, I did encourage at their last meeting that, well, they, they do have sole authority to withdraw and make expenditures, that they consider doing so within the parameters of the town purchasing policy, right? It's, it's a best practice. And then also that when they do it, they have a discussion with town leadership, especially maybe starting out with Rob, who is their town connection, and going on here if they need any other help, to make sure that what they are planning to do aligns with the overall town vision. It's something, because they can't go telling a department, we bought this, you need to do this, right? So we want to work collaboratively with them. We don't want to discourage their work, but we wanna make sure if they're purchasing something that has value and goes into action.
So it's not allowed for the select board to impose a request to seek authorization for the RSAs?
No, absolutely.
I think, I think the answer to your question is, it's defined in RSAs, and whenever you adopt, when town meeting adopts a trust fund, it's defined within the article, who is the authority to expend. So we just have to look back at the articles authorizing the trust fund, and then we know.
And I.
And that would be why they're the ones that are allowed to expend.
For example, it was unfortunate, last year, they, I believe it was last year, they bought some road signs and made plans to put them up, but they hadn't done the process before buying the signs of seeing if they would be put up, right? So that's something where we can collaborate and get some synergy and really be a helpful resource. So it's more a piece of stewardship and working together than it is us telling them. Certainly, they can buy the signs anytime they want. Hopefully, they will choose when they do these things to make sure that they're gonna be able to go out into action before they do the expenditure, but we can only ask nicely, which we did do for future. I did so on your behalf last week, or two weeks ago. So are there any further comments or questions on the investment policy? If there are none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt with revisions. As would I.
I so moved. Second.
Okay. Any final discussion from anyone online? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. We are down to board and committee memberships and appointments. So Elisa usually runs us through, they're long, which is good. And we have a lot of some great folks signing up for committees, so Elisa, I'm assuming you're gonna guide us through as usual.
Well, so I set this out earlier.
Yeah.
Everything is color-coded on the left. If it's gray, it's an existing member who I have not heard from. And I did send out reminders today saying that their term expires on May one. We do have a meeting on May one, so if they submit an application between now and then, they can go with the next meeting. Everything in green is either an existing member who does wanna be reappointed and their application is included, or a new member, it's marked new, but it's also green, for somebody who is not currently dissipated, but they also have submitted an application. Everything in yellow is a vacant position, which is unfortunately too many. There's a couple of positions on the Old Home Days Committee that do not want reappointment, one which has been completely inactive for quite some time, so. And one member of the Recreation Commission who is not interested in this one thing.
On conservation, I don't, do we determine that's not a vacant spot, or is it?
That is not a.
Okay, so that one's not vacant.
By what?
So would they have seven members with me? It was just.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So right now, we have, we have vacant spots on capital improvement program, energy committee, Old Home Days has quite a few. TIP committee, and I think you guys need a few more who are within the TIP district, right? Or at least one more.
I think one more.
Because Eric Council is in. Does Eric Council is in? Does he owns?
He's in the district.
Are you, I don't know if he's in. Are you in? You're not quite in? Okay, that is just.
The question arises with the TIP district is this is some, the membership is specified by RSN. So I don't know that he can be a voting member, but he can be a representative of your towns and shares his opinion and brings it back and that sort of thing. So there's a difference.
Or could he be appointed as one of the vacation?
Let me look at that, because I think we have one vacant seat for any resident in town.
And if that counts, and if he's within the district, then it would be that person.
Then he would fill that seat.
Okay. Free warden, which Jim Taylor is working on, Advanced Transit Board of Directors, Jim, it says Jim, but is he not taking that?
He is looking for somebody to take over for him, but we have not found anybody yet.
Massoma River Local Advisory Committee, we're looking for two, and then Enfield Shaker Village Scenic Byway Advisory Board. There's quite a few. I think that's somewhat inactive because it states something or other, is that?
It's just.
But it's, it's something that we like, yeah.
And we have it. We do have a, a grant in through the scenic byway, so if that grant comes through, that's a committee that will, will fit together, but.
So it'd be good to get some.
There is some distinct issues with the scenic byway stuff and the disbandment of their department, so.
It doesn't mean it's not a good exercise for us.
And these are only some of the members of this committee, because it's not, it's eleven in Enfield, so Enfield has members as well.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on this, or do we wanna prove it as a slate? What's your pleasure? I think we need to accept the resignations first, right? And then probably approve it as a slate. Is that the most appropriate?
And you can do it in either order.
Okay.
Well, I move that we accept the resignations as presented to us.
Did we not, um, did you guys sign up with a copy or no? You do, Tracy, did you? Okay, you, okay, I'm gonna make sure. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to accept the resignations.
That's what he just did.
I'm sorry, that was the resignations. Boy, okay. To accept the, the slate of appointees as presented.
I'll start from that.
Oh, am I the motion now? Sure, I'll make the motion, okay. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay.
You will have appointment by such your next comedian to sign.
All right, there are no administrative items, so we are on to other business that come before the Board of Selectmen. We have public comments. You're gonna get admonished to be nice. Oh, good.
Yeah, I'd like to offer an apology to this board for comments that I made two weeks ago, where I used stereotypes to find people from the state of Kentucky. We all know they're very smart people. With that said, I planned on asking some follow-up questions of Tracy regarding the ICF issue, but I convinced myself that it's absolutely pointless. What I would like to say is, or offer is that in future committees where we're deciding, you know, great sums of money over many years of debate, then the committees need a lot of direction. They need to know that they can't vote on something with a motion. We can't decide huge numbers just based on lowest cost. And we need, if somebody on the board does not know something about something that they're voting on, it's imperative that the committee seek out the information. And unfortunately, asking a contractor isn't always the answer, because as we all know, contractors don't like to do anything new. They don't like to do, what they do like to do is what they did yesterday, last week, and last month, and last year, because that's what they know. So it does require additional work on committees to learn about new, new things and how, how, how to vote on them. And that, with that, I just have one question of Ed. It was a year or two ago that we voted, I think it was a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, the DPW for upgrades and energy efficiency upgrades. Where is that?
The roof installation has been decided that it would be best done by multiple contractors and our building inspector, that it would be needed to be done when the roofs replaced. That trying to do it from the interior would be a waste of money.
So what I would ask is that in five years, when you start trying to add on to the new building, remember how. remember how hard it is to get this stuff done.
Do you have anything else?
I think that's enough.
Okay. Go ahead, Phil.
You said that all positions were filled. Is the janitor slash maintenance person filled?
Yes.
I had a comment about that position.
If you would, since it's a single person, we can direct that to Ed outside of a public forum, but because it's a single employee, we usually like to have those discussions, good or bad, directly with Ed if we could ask you to do that.
It's more of the job description and pay scale.
Excellent.
The job description is primarily for janitorial, but there is, you know, they do maintenance and stuff as well. Anything, anything that takes any major maintenance, it's more of a coordination to get that done.
So, my second question to go along with that, is that position, when we had our MPAC committee, we suggested that we would have a maintenance person onboard that would take care of the buildings, all public buildings, go around looking for problems, be able to fix problems of minor to mid-grade, and acknowledge those problems, any larger problems would then know enough that he would, or he, she, whoever, would say, okay, we need a contractor to come in and do that. The premise being that we've had so many rundown buildings not being taken care of. And at the time, my opinion was that if we weren't gonna hire the person that was in that position, that I was not for going ahead with the buildings, because it was so important to do so. Is that position, the position that I'm talking about, or is that a separate position?
No, I think that's it, there's, I mean, there was a big emphasis on it when I went through the budget committee and select board, being decided on the position that it would be, a large part of that would be janitorial as well, so that did split some of the time.
So, my follow-up to that is, in creating a janitorial position, majorly in that position, did somebody do the square footage of all of our published buildings? And say that one person can maintain those buildings within the timeframe that that person has? Because I don't think that the position we were talking about at the MPAC, to me, that was like a full-time position, to maintain the buildings. They were supposed to be able to, you know, fix drywall, you know, fix concrete structures that they needed to paint, recognize mold, you know, remediate that, those kinds of things, which is total different than a janitor, and I think we should change it to custodian rather than janitor. And I don't think the two should be the same position, as far as I'm concerned. Especially at the pay grade that we have. Because we were, at least in our meetings, we were talking about somebody that would be a basically would be involved in the trades. And, I mean, at twenty dollars an hour, you can go up to, I looked it up today, you can go wash dishes at Dartmouth College, or you can go work at McDonald's. And not to say that those are bad jobs for anybody, but we want a professional in that position that's going to take care of these buildings that we're saying we want the last fifty years. And like the one down at Sunapee, looked immaculate when we walked in, and you would have thought it was built yesterday. And I don't see how that one person can do both those jobs. And I think if we need to pay somebody thirty-five bucks an hour to do that, or more, what, you know, I'm just saying a number. But that's what we should do, and I think we should take that into consideration, and like, like one of the things Gary talked about is, and I haven't heard it said much on any follow-up since our committee, that these buildings were fifty years, we're looking at fifty years to last plus. And as soon as we passed it, and now we're into the intricate makings of the building, we're saying, okay, we need to cut this out, we need to cut this out. At the same time, I think we need to look at needs and wants on other spending that is being considered in the town. And there's a lot of, and I'll even say the Methodist Hill property. That's a huge valuable property, I would think, that could go on the actual. So that when we need a person, that we can pay a person, we don't have to worry about where the money's coming from, we don't have to borrow money every time we turn around for something. And so, that's my position on that position.
I would say, going back just a little bit on the history of the budgeting of that position, and others can chip in, one of the things we've had, not necessarily a struggle, but it's just another layer of due diligence, is we have buildings to clean that can't have free access to just anyone, and one of them is our police department. So hiring an outside firm and making sure someone's qualified and safe to be in there is a little bit of another layer. So this, this is one of the things that we took over doing ourselves, I think. I'm seeing those light maintenance pieces that you were talking about, I think if that's fair, Ed. And I know we talked about a ticketing system, so while it may not be a conversation on this level, because it's an operations conversation, it's definitely something I've talked with Ed about. And I'm sure you've talked with your team about how to manage, and because we've got years, and we know of neglect, right? And we don't want to perpetuate that cycle. So, and I'm saying that's my personal opinion, but I think if we are going to invest in our future and our buildings, that we need to invest in maintaining them. So I, I feel like that was where we were headed with it, I don't know if that's fair.
No, and I would, I would agree with you, when I came in, that was the job that had been passed and given to me to hire for. We can have that discussion moving forward, but we have been charging him with, you know, fixing drywall, and painted the whole inside of the community building, he has other projects planned for this year. So we're, we're moving forward on those maintenance pieces. But, you know, I can see moving forward that it may be something that we need to look at as we get a little further.
I think that's true, I think as we move into the future, we're going to have to expand that role. I think things are better right now, they're not perfect.
Yeah.
We know that. It's hard to take old buildings and make them perfect. But when we have new buildings, they've gotta stay in darn good shape.
And to build on what Bill had said, one of the ways, you know, Sunapee's a very example that they have successfully kept their, their building in excellent condition is through their budgeting process, they have a very specific budget line for maintenance of that building. Which is not something we've ever had in our budgets. And not in the same way, we've had maintenance lines, but not at all what they do.
Right, building by building, each building.
Like, like that building has a a budget that they've planned based on, you know, the overall side, based on what they think the building will need each year. Because you can kind of estimate that, you know, one percent or two percent, or whatever they do now. And so that is definitely something that as the building gets built and as Whitney Hall is renovated, we need to, we need to do that.
And I know Gary has handled it, there's one other thing I wanted to say along with the, the skill of that person, is there the difference between somebody being able to do something? And, and I'm not directing it at the person at all. I'm saying that when we look at somebody compared to somebody that can do it competently, efficiently, and correctly. There's, you know, somebody can muddle through something, and somebody can do it right. And I think that's the person that we need to, and I'm not saying anything negative against this person, I don't even know what this person is. I'm just saying that I think in our committee, that's the type of person we were talking about along the lines of what Sunapee did.
Gary?
Yeah, just to follow up on Phil's comment, and it doesn't matter if you call it a janitor, well, actually it does, a custodian, or facilities maintenance technician.
Correct.
If you're paying twenty or thirty-five dollars an hour, it really doesn't make a lot of difference if he doesn't have any money to do anything with it. So, follow up on his comment, yeah, you've got to have in your budget that there's ten, twenty, fifty thousand dollars a year, or whatever, so that twenty or thirty-five dollar an hour person can actually do something, rather than just identify.
And one of the things, we don't necessarily actively discuss all the time, but it's, it weighs in the back, I think, of everyone's minds, is how do you expand your tax base, right, so that you're not just increasing taxes, but expanding the actual base. And so, when we, the voters went to the polls, they did approve the quarterly relax on water and sewer. They did approve a second ADU. So there are pieces of an expanding tax base, and then we'll be looking at all of the zoning. There's some zoning in town that just absolutely doesn't match where it is at all. And so I think there's opportunities here to be respectful of place and respectful of the kind of town Anfield says it wants to be in the master plan, and still expand that tax base that we can afford to take care of the things we're investing in.
And just as an aside with Dartmouth College, they're, they're, they're like a ripple effect right now, because they're paying dishwashers twenty-one dollars an hour, and the students unionize, and it's causing a ripple effect throughout the college.
Yeah. And we, and we know very much that wages are competitive here, and we know how much housing and living expenses are, so. Definitely a challenge, but one that the board has actively taken on in conjunction with the budget committee. Are there other public comments? Sorry, I didn't.
You can do that, I just, before we're done.
I'm worried, go ahead.
I have one other, and I'm reading the minutes, one of the, you know, it's the last meeting, the meeting before, we're talking about the minutes, and timely, getting them timely, and is that another position that we need to add a person in to do that, so that, you know, so that we can get them all done correctly? But I was, I think it was you who made a comment about recording versus writing.
Yeah.
And municipal associations, that's a right to know law, says you can't record instead of write. And there's a lot of talk about listserv. And I, I understand that that's a venue for people to find information, but I don't think that that should be used as a public response. If somebody has a question, I don't think anybody on this board should respond, because technically, that would be a meeting, and that would be a item of record. If an elected official is, I would think, making a comment. And so I think that if someone has a question on there, they should be encouraged to come to a meeting. And I think that would also help when we're talking about attendance of meetings, is they attend the meetings, and and I also saw that those two thousand dollars cut off our mailing budget, trying to save money, but is that a wise thing to do when we're trying to reach out to the public to try to get more people to come into meetings? I, I think rather than just cutting money, we should study that, maybe we should put more money into that and send letters out to people to say, you need to come to meetings. Just a thought.
We, we spend a lot of years having people to come to meetings. It's a, it's a regular ask, I certainly think it's a worthy ask, and if we don't keep doing it, we'll get no one, so. There's a lot of avenues, certainly the listserv is just one of many. And we really developed over the year, the newsletter, which has really just continued to grow. The town has opt-in announcements, there's going to be some text additions, so it's, it's an evolution. I would say, you can't limit someone's free speech and tell them they can't post, right?
Well, we can limit the.
No, you can't limit someone's free speech for their personal. So you can say your personal opinion, but you cannot represent any board or committee. And, and that goes for everyone, right? It's a constitutional right.
Liking that to, and the butter not being able to be on that board, when you can't say, okay, I'm speaking as a person versus I'm, that argument would be very difficult to prove one way or the other in a court of law, that you speaking, you a select board member speaking as a private citizen, commenting on listserv about public business.
Though listserv is a private forum.
Understood.
Yeah, so, and it's a, I understand your opinion, I, well, I don't share it. It's something that we actually get hardly criticized for not answering. So it's, there's a no-win situation, I think many of us are judicious and don't opt in unless, and frequently it's to say, hey, there's a meeting, hey, here's a link to the video, or the minutes, or whatever documents, and, and really overall encouraging people to join in in this forum, in which we have an official record, so.
I think that's perfectly fine, I think oppining about business is, could not be allowed.
A business? I must have, I miss things on the listserv, they mostly go into a folder and someone tells me if I need to read them. It's, it's a lot of things, it's kind of like Facebook, right? Sometimes you want to read the things, and sometimes you just scroll on by. So helpful tool when it, when it's used, I'll say judiciously, yeah. And I think you'll be announcing once the website work is done later on, the new options for.
Yes, we'll be.
Interfacing with the town. So that's very good. We have another question or comment, I know I have Ed on deck, is there anyone online? Okay, Ed?
No, I just wanted to update the board, I should have put in my manager's report, but I did release the RFP this last, or RFQ this last week for the compensation study. That information should be coming back to you.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything under public comment? It's your last chance. Then I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn.
I shall move.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you all for coming.